Good afternoon, we'll go ahead and get started. We're facing a couple of issues this afternoon. Chairman Walker won't be with us, he's on vacation. So he is getting a lot of things coming this afternoon. So he will be joining us by way of telephoning vacation. Today is July the 13th, 2020, and we'll go ahead and call this monthly meeting to order. Like to welcome everybody to our monthly meeting. If you're busy with us, and we certainly always encourage anyone and everyone to join in with us on our monthly board meetings. It's the best way to know what's going on in the community. And so we certainly do encourage that. As always, we start our meetings out with a prayer and a pledge. And we're going to ask Commissioner Vaughn, if she will, to lead us in the pledge. And then Commissioner Green will lead us in the prayer. Will Stan?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's prayer. Father, we come to you this evening thanking you for any blessings that you've bestowed upon us. We thank you for life today. We thank you for your son that died on the cross to forgive us of our sins and give us eternal life. We pray that we come together this evening, that you bless each one that's here. We pray that you'd help us to carry on the business of this county with the interest of all in mind. We pray in Jesus' name, amen. Okay, we'll ask the board, if they will, to approve the minutes of their motion.
I'll make a motion when you present it.
Second. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote. We need to approve the agenda for tonight, so go out here, a motion and a second on approval of the agenda.
So good.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So there. Going on down to our appointments tonight, under item A, the first one will be the COVID-19 update. And I understand Karen Powell couldn't be with us tonight, but we've got the distinguished William Keller here with us, so we'll let William, if you will, come up and give us an update.
Good afternoon to you. Hope you're doing well. Today marks day 120 of our EOC activation for COVID-19. We start this week with several items of importance. We have 5,640, 5,064 tested, 4,545 negative, 236 tests are pending, and we have 283 positives. We do expect an additional update later this afternoon or early evening as staff at the Health Department and at the EOC continues to work on new numbers that have come in this afternoon. Several things that I'd like to talk about is current trends in our data. We have seen our positivity rate increase to 6%. That is an increase from where we were at the past several weeks. We are still below our 8%, 8.5% threshold that we were at back at the beginning of June. It's something that we closely continue to monitor. And the positivity rate is, remind you, is when you look at the total number of tests performed, it does not include the pending tests. They can't be included in that number. The total number of positives and negatives, and then the percentage of positives out of total number of tested. We have 81 in quarantine, 200 out of quarantine, and we have two deaths. 6% hospitalization rate is the update. This is as of Friday afternoon. We have not got this number updated for this afternoon as we await additional data to come from the Health Department. As I've said in the past, we continue to monitor the trends of our age groups and the breakdown of positives in each of those groups. Our pediatric age group, 0 to 17 years of age, has 24% of our positives. We're greater than two times the state average in that age group. And as I've said in the past, it's certainly something that we continue to monitor because we do not want to see that percentage move into our elderly population, where we currently stand at 10%, which is just slightly under the state average. The majority of our cases are in the age group of 25 to 49 years of age. And the 28752 ZIP code Marion having the most positive cases when we look at it as a breakdown. I do, I will announce this afternoon in press releases forthcoming from the Health Department that we have two congregate living outbreaks. An outbreak in congregate living is defined as two or more cases. A cluster is defined as five or more cases. This is something that our team has worked on extremely hard from the very beginning of this incident is to prevent the virus from entering these congregate living areas. But as of today, we are reporting, we have two facilities that are experiencing an outbreak. In the planning stages, the past 16 weeks, the EOC team and Public Health, along with the facility administrators, have been very deliberate in planning for this type of incident occurring. We have developed a long-term care strike team. This looks at operationally what actions need to be taken. Once you understand, or once we know the virus has entered a facility, what are the actions that can immediately be taken to further protect the residents and the staff that are inside that facility? In doing that planning, we have partnered with Dogwood Health Trust. There's a geriatrician, a physician who specializes and has experience working in another county. She told us this afternoon, she's currently worked three outbreaks. But she has been providing guidance along the way on best practices, what needs to happen once the incident occurs. So now we are in, where we were in planning and preparation, we are in response mode for the outbreaks in congregate living. So what will this include? Daily contact with the facilities to provide proper personal protection equipment, consultation, and technical support being offered by the Health Department, as well as the Mercy Operations Center? Our logistics officer has already provided PPE push packs to congregate facility that has the long-term care facility, where we have multiple patients and staff that work in the facility. I should note that the facility, none of the patients at this time have tested positive. It is staff members that we have that are positive. The PPE push packs not only have been sent locally, but it's push packs that have been sent by the North Carolina Mercy Management, as well as FEMA, in advance of us knowing of the incident occurring in the facility. Our team is totally committed to provide around-the-clock support to these long-term care facilities. This has the potential to be a serious situation. As I've said, we need big folks wearing masks. When we're wearing masks, we are protecting these employees from long-term care. We may not work in long-term care facilities, but when we pass them in the public, it's something that we feel is important, and we are protecting them from contracting this virus. And we are asking folks, please wear a mask. When we look at long-term care, we know the outbreaks in these facilities can increase hospitalization rates, it can increase our mortality rate, and essentially, it is all hands-on deck for our team and Public Health to protect our most vulnerable citizens that are residing in the facility. Testing sites, results, and turnaround times. After the July 4th holiday, we have seen an extended amount of time, or it's taken an extended amount of time to turn results around due to the large number of tests that are coming in to the various labs. And we are experiencing that locally, seeing test results extended to five to seven days. And we know that those test results need to be out much quicker. But our team is doing everything in conjunction with Public Health to monitor for results and turn those around as quick as possible. We continue to do drive-through testing sites. We have the next site coming up on Wednesday at Grace Community Church, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. or 12:00 noon. That's on 70 West. And then on Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Health Department, and that is also a drive-through site. I'm extremely proud of the long hours that not only Public Health is working, but Emergency Services Team at the EOC is working, literally upon knowing of a potential issue. We had folks working literally around the clock last night. They were out early this morning. We have completed testing of all residents in that facility, and we are working actively as we speak to finish staff. So again, this is a situation that we take very serious, and it's all hands-on deck for our agency.
Appreciate that, Kelly. You know, it, sometimes it seems like that a lot of people at times will think that this has all been forced into a political thing, where you're required to wear a mask. I think we should, you know, look in our hearts and say, listen, I want to wear a mask to protect that other person, if not for me, for someone else. There are people that are in our communities, in our churches, and Walmart, wherever, that are really high-risk, you know? And you're going to be, I don't care who you are, you're going to be around some of those people, basically. So, you know, I think, I just think it is important to us to have the consideration to wear the mask for their safety, if not for our own. So I would certainly encourage that. I'd also like to say that I appreciate the good work that the board departments are doing, and all the emergency services that are involved. You guys do a great job, and we really appreciate it. Also, I'd like to relay the thanks that we have to our Health Department, Karen Powell, and the third group. There's, you know, there's a lot that is put together that makes up this fence that we're forming against this COVID problem that we have. And I just appreciate everything that, I know that our whole board does, we appreciate everything that all you guys are doing to try to help protect us. Anybody else got any comments?
William, you stated it, we're at 6%
That's correct.
...being hospitalized.
That's correct.
0 to 17 age group, 24% is that number.
That's correct.
Can you tell me from 0 to 17, how many of those have been hospitalized?
I don't have that number with me right now.
Can you get that?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Chairman Walker, do you hear us?
I hear you.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Keller?
What's going on? I was at Walmart over here fixing phones, getting my callers line, that probably 99 percent of people. I was shoppers that had the phones lines that I had.
Wow.
Now, I thought William today, I thought most of his concern is, is not him, it's not, and I agree, he has to wear a mask, and I don't. And I know him out of the healthcare setting, and I know he kind of looks bad. But I've been, and half the people wear them, half don't. Half wear them correctly, half don't. And I think that it is important. I do feel that. And I'm ripped right down through the middle, from the healthcare side and from the economic side. And I know I should always err on health and safety of the people in this county, as far as I've been for 26 years, as always their best interest. But, you know, when you go to Walmart, there's 500 people in there. And I thought to William today, you know, I told him, you can correct me anytime you want to, and that's fine, I accept that. I said, but, you know, when we close our courthouse down because of a positive, but we go to Walmart, how do you know there's not positives in there? And it runs wild, and you shut them and pops down. It's hard for me to stomach. It's hard for me to, as a county commissioner, and as a citizen, as a person that goes in, you know, I was at Lowe's this morning, and the majority of them was not in a mask. And that kind of surprised me in a way. But how do we, you know, how do we monitor that? I was a restaurant yesterday, and people walked up to the door, and there was a message on the door, and I walked off. You know, that's a small business, and thought, well, they could go through the drive-through we were eating in. It's hard, it's hard when you're facing the public and they can't get the right information. Or we can, we can say it's not politicalized, and I've thought about that too. But when you go there and walk into a riot, not a protest, but a riot, take his mask off and say, and demand that we wear one, that's two-faced, plain and simple. And it's hard, it's hard to explain to the public when they can't get truthful answers out of our state government. I'm not blaming local. I think we're doing a lot of fighting. But the, if it continues the way it is, it's going to be pretty chaotic, right? People are going to fight. And I think that's the thing is, it's, I don't know how you get their minds changed, William. I mean, they, I wear mine, when I go to the Walmart, I tell them we have close proximity. And I try to stay away from people, stay a whole bunch of the time, or just stay off from myself. And it is very hard. But I, please, no, please, no, I support work, you know, the efforts to try and curb this thing. And I know you say, well, wear a mask. And I guess individuals think that we're going to have to search our hearts, like Tony said, and think about it. But, you know, I'm ready to get back to Commissioner Fordham. I know it's nice down here, but sooner or later, we got to get back to function. Because they're uptight at school. My kids are uptight. Everybody I talk to, they don't like the process of what's going on. And it's not a good educational experience. And I know you say, well, we get them all together, an outbreak. Dang it if you do it, dang it if you don't. So that's all my thoughts.
I went to Walmart. I think it was, this is Monday, so I guess it was Friday, and I was pleasantly pleased that a bunch more people had on their masks than usual. But it's like some of the confusion when I was talking, and I wear my mask out here, I knew. But some people were talking, well, I read that, and the governor says, if, you know, if you don't feel like you can breathe, or if you don't miss, and you don't have to. And I think that was confusing. There was some confusion in the way that was presented, as far as, wear it, but now you don't have to, you know? And so when, I guess when Mother used to give me an edge, I'd always take a mile. So I think as citizens, we take a mile if we're given an edge for anything. But I appreciate everything that we're doing, because you're at the front line. You are out there testing, and I appreciate every hour and every minute you're all working with this. I appreciate the donations and everything, all the way down, because it runs the gamut. It's not just one little group, it's the whole pocketful, so we appreciate you.
There's so much conflicting information.
Thank you.
There is so many different opinions. I wear this mask as a community leader, I wear this mask to protect the elderly in this community. I wear it to protect the sick child recovering at home from devastating disease, whatever it may be, of all the people that I pass. And as I've said plenty of times, of disasters that I come back from, when politics and disasters collide, bad things can happen. And as a local community leader in the healthcare community, I hope people can look at this individually and think about the other people, our most vulnerable in this community. We have over 700 elderly people in our adult care homes and long-term care facilities that we have got to protect. This isn't about me, my personal opinions, this is about us and our team trying to protect our most vulnerable citizens here in this community.
Oh, my sin, that agreement, I appreciate that. You know, again, I want to reiterate my feelings on this, you know? No matter what we think, let's, let's just try to be respectful for other people. Not, you know, let's take ourselves out of the equation, and let's just be respectful for other people. One other thing that I did see on the news, that you might share something on that, but according to what the news said, that North Carolina right now is in the top six in the nation for the increase in the COVID virus.
I can't now comment specifically, because I haven't looked at that today. I do know that the trend in North Carolina is concerning on the positivity rate. And as I've said a number of times, it's so important not to look at the daily number of positives that it increases, it's all about the percentage and the trend. Yes, more testing will drive more positive cases, but when you see the positivity rate increase, that's, that's the trend that we're concerned about, yeah. We've seen an uptake, or uptick in McDowell, as well as across North Carolina.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Keller, for that. We're, we're going to hear item B, was a 911 center update, and I thank you and Mr. Emory Bussler, we're going to do that one. So if you guys will just come on up, and we'll proceed into that.
Yeah, so thanks again. I'm going to recognize Emory, or explain the project.
Yes, excuse me. David, you come? David?
I'm here.
Oh, boy, yes, excuse me.
For over two years now, the 911 Center and the staff led by Emory Bussler, 911 manager, has been working on the Next Generation Project. I've provided several updates over the course of time on this project. It's exciting, it's new technology for the center. But before she gives an overview of the work that's been done and the project completion update, I want to take a minute and recognize the work that she does, not only for this project, but she truly leads our 911 Center. I'm extremely grateful to have a solid leadership team, and Emory sits at the core of that, and just absolutely works her heart out day in and day out. So I appreciate what she does, and I'll let her give an update of the exciting work in 911 Center.
Thank you, William. As he said, we went to the statewide EZNet program, and to give you an idea what that is, the state has invented an IP cloud-based phone system, and they have ensured us that it is so redundant that we will not lose connectivity. We opted to go hosted, which means that they monitor our equipment 24 hours, 7 days a week. This helped on financial side as well, for us to go to the hosted system, because all of our main equipment is in Raleigh. So they monitor all of our equipment 24 hours, 7 days a week. If anything happens to our system, if our building was to catch on fire and we all logged out of our system, our phone calls would immediately go to Rutherford County. Along with that, if something crashed in our system, and the system was seeing a problem with McDowell County's network itself, again, our phone calls would immediately go to Rutherford County. This is a statewide system, so we could pick up our phone calls in Murphy or Manio, just like we can in Marion, North Carolina, as soon as everybody is on the same hosting. They are not all completely done yet, so that's not the case right now. But once we are all on the system, if something was to happen here, we could go to any county that's hosted or on the EZNet system and answer our phone calls as we are sitting in our center. As we all know, that is not the same as sitting in our center, but if we had to, that would be an option. Like he said, we started this approximately two years ago. It was a long, hard process. It consisted of weekly conference calls with the state, AT&amp;T, Entrado, and Motorola. I can't see anything bad about our team. We had some hiccups and some bumps in the road. Our system did include an update to our TTY and text system. I opted out of texting because the system they were going to provide would not allow me to initiate a text out. We, right now, in McDowell County, text a lot of phone calls out every day to 911 hangups. When the state came in and said, this is your option for your text, they did not give me the option to text out, so I told them we would not go on their system, because I was not going to take something away from our citizens that we already provided to them. We do get some 911 texts into the center, but our percentage of outgoing texts is extremely higher than our inbound texting. Because we can simply, if Brenda calls 911, if we call her back lots of times, they will not answer. But if we text Brenda, because a lot of high school students do call 911 on accident, we can text them, they will text us back and tell us that they do not have a problem, they'll tell us where we're at, and we'll update the deputy of what's going on. This system also was an update to our equipment. So not only did we go onto the EZNet last Wednesday, we were able to update all our phone equipment. We stayed on the same program, which was great for our employees, because it wasn't a whole lot of change for them, but we did have some upgrades in our system. Along with the EZNet, our location accuracy is better. Our GIS had a lot of work to do with this. They had to be a 99% in order for us to go to an I3 EZNet model. Most of the counties only went to EZNet on step one. Step two was an I3. We were the first county to go Vesta, EZNet, and I3 all at the same time in the western region. Also, if you're calling from the courthouse and you're on the second floor, we can now see that you're calling from the second floor, when before we should only be able to see the area of where you're calling. Now, once our EZNet project is complete, and the GIS project is complete, we should be able to see, hopefully, what room you are in, in that building. So everything we do is a step in progress of getting better locations of where that 911 hangup call comes from, in case that 911 hangup call is an actual emergency. And I can't say enough about going live on Wednesday. There was very little problems. Our team worked very well. We had the backup center staff and our primary center, and everybody had good attitudes. There was a lot of test calls, there was a lot of old system, new system, phone calls, redundancy. Our old system would ring, and the new system would ring behind it. So our staff put up the low lot that day, but we were very happy when the project was over. And they said it was one of the quickest projects they did, and we're very pleased with our staff. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. My wife, absolutely, she, she will always love the 911 Center we have here in the county. And obviously, it was because of the situation we had back in January, when I was laying in the floor dead. And she, she fortunately was on the phone with a representative of the 911 Center, which, you know, helped her and guided her through all the steps that she needed to take. And, you know, and I'm convinced that it made a difference, you know? So, you know, we really should always, if you never had to use the 911 call center, great, but if you ever do, it's just a wonderful thing to have, and we appreciate that, all the hard work that you've done and your staff have done.
Thank you.
So thanks very much. Anybody else got comments? Chairman Walker, do you have anything to say?
Obviously, tell me what you saw, because I believe you're a very professional, dedicated, well-trained, brave individual, and this, thank you every day, once to protect and help the people in our county.
Thank you.
You said our phone calls would roll to Rutherford. Theirs goes down, theirs rolls.
They actually go to Catawba County.
Oh, okay.
I believe, or Caldwell County. I think they go to Caldwell County.
Okay.
Each county chooses where they roll to.
Roll to, okay.
Mitchell counties will roll to that.
Oh, okay.
William, do you have a summary?
I just want to thank her again, and let the board know that not only has she implemented the project, made it successful, but her and her team done this during COVID, which we've had an EOC activation for 120 days now, but we've also got all of our normal divisions that are running. How many calls a year are you processing?
120,000.
120,000 calls a year. EMS is running 10,000 calls. Community paramedics are 2,000 calls a year. So her, and her staff, to get this accomplished in the midst of everything we have going on, is extremely impressive, but also, I'm extremely grateful for what they do, so.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay. Well, move along. Item three, under A, is our old On the loan, out of item three, under A, is our old business EMS capital project update. And we'll turn to the town manager, Mr. Woodton, to give us an update on that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Quick update on this project. When we were putting the agenda together, we didn't know if it would be a good update or a bad update. So it's a good update, of course. You all know that on the board side. Last Tuesday, we participated in a phone call with the local government commission for their board meeting where we submitted the application approval to them for our EMS projects. This was the last official phase before we could sign construction contracts with the contractors. They, being the commission, which is comprised of the treasurer, state auditor, secretary of revenue, and a few other folks, go over every project. They, you know, learn of the costs, what you're going to do if there's any concerns about paying for the project, those sorts of things. That's all discussed there. It was approved. There were no comments or concerns by the commission about the project. They had seen what the commissioners have committed to do as far as county finances, very pleased with our financial position and where we're headed with that. So today, this morning, Vice Chairman Brown signed several documents for the loan. I signed the construction contracts, and we're about two weeks from being underway on station four, which is the north station. Don't have a date on the larger one. Imagine that'll take a little more time as far as the scale, but by sometime in early August, both projects should be underway. So we're very excited, and the staff is, to see that coming along at that point of the board, I'm sure you are.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woodton. No action required at this time.
Yes, sir.
We will move along to the old business fee board appointments. And we've got the McDowell Tech Board of Trustees. I think everyone just had an opportunity to cast their vote on that. Matt and Herb, if you would receive these.
We had three nominations, Pam Porshi, Mark Garrett, and Mark Luke Zimmerman. And the vote is unanimous for Mark Garrett. And I will let him know.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, also, under old business, out of C, update on the public shooting range. We'll turn it over to Mr. Woodton again, ready to give a forward update on that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Another, we talked about this last month. We were a little, I think, two weeks out from the bid opening, which was held on July 1st in this room. Don't have the list right in front of me, but we had 12, approximately 12 bids from companies all over west and north Carolina, which is a tremendous response. A lot of that probably has to do with the state of the economy, with the pandemic and other things. The low bidder for the project is England Builders. And so we always love, it's not always opportunity or the chance, but when a local contractor can be the low bidder, it's always, it's always great because you know their quality. Pick up the phone and call the owner. And so it doesn't always work out that way, but it did in this case. So there were a couple of alternates, and you have the total price in front of you, Again, that is in line with estimates we've provided you. I'll also note that the classroom office building was not in this bid, but we bid separately, and that was on purpose. So we, NC Wildlife handled the bidding process. They have prepared the attached bid tabulation form on page 37 that has all the contractors listed. And so you see again, England being the most responsive low bidder there. So staff, the county staff and NC Wildlife staff do recommend that you award the contract to England Builders. So if you choose to do so, the action would be to enter the bids into the minutes and award the contract to England Builders.
Good, thank you, sir. This was a vision that I personally had some, over five years ago, when I come on the board. And, you know, as soon as I mentioned it to the board members, you know, all board members were all over it and in favor of it. And I'd like to say that our board, including every member, has worked very hard over the past five years to try to make this happen. So now we're seeing it happen, and I just want to say that I thank all the board members for all the hard work that they have put into it and the staff, Mr. Woodton, Von Harmon, and all that have been involved in this. And so we're finally seeing it come to be a real thing, and I'm just really excited about it. So anybody else have any comments on the shooting range?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move if we enter the bids into the minutes and award the contract to England Builders and get this thing underway.
We've got a motion. Would you say? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman Walker, do you have anything to say to that?
Yes, sir. I'm very excited just about who wins on this project. I'm looking at the groundbreaking and looking forward to recreational shooting currently in the county on a simplified range. And this has been a goal for the board to set the expectations. The board's just gone and agreed, and so far, this board serves and understands what part of this has to last. And looking forward to that. This is another added feature of our recreational program. There's trails, there's recreational shooting, a few sports, just another piece of the technical, and another opportunity to do the good job we've been able to do. A great job. Take that in mind.
Thank you very much, here, Chairman. Okay, so we had a motion in a second. What do we vote on? Okay, then we're moving forward with that. All right, under new business, out of A, administrative items. Mr. Woodton, would you like to lead us off with that?
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to. The administrative items, or I like to call them housekeeping items as well, that don't necessarily fit under, or have enough to have their own standalone item. So just for information, the first item you have in your packet is a request from the town of Old Ford for a waiver of the fireworks permit fee of $80. The county provides funding, I believe this year was an amount of $1,000, to go towards the fireworks themselves. But without your action, staff would typically charge a permit fee for the town in this instance. So you've got their letter there on page 39 requesting a waiver.
Please approve the waiver request. I'd like to, before we vote on that, I'd like to also say that it would be my thought and intention that this be done away with. So I'd like to replace the board on that. I'll say, you know, this is, what, $80 some dollars? Yeah, it is. It's very nothing, but, you know, this is something that the whole county enjoys, you know, and, you know, the fireworks is something that everybody can go to and enjoy. And, you know, I think that they would just, I believe, the board commissioners to weigh that and definitely let that fee, you know, let's just.
If the municipal law is a pressure to us and wants to do fireworks, I know they used to do that in the old Yogi camp, but do they have to pay a fee on stuff?
They do. They did pay this year.
But, you know, whenever you're looking, and I'm just looking at cities in McDowell County, I'm not talking about private entities. I'm talking about municipalities.
The town would be the only instance where this would apply.
City where it does.
The city does their own inspections and that.
Yeah.
We do, to the question as far as fee waivers and things, we do have some exemptions for funded agencies, including school systems. Sometimes municipalities are included in there as well as far as straight out exemptions. And so this could easily be put in the fee schedule as just a permanent waiver unless changed by a future board, if you'd like to do that.
Well, that's one of the parts of the law.
Chairman Walker, would you like to say anything to that?
I'll just say, I actually went to the Old Ford fireworks this year. Very good job, the board, and it's just very, it did not do theirs, which said that maybe the board wanted to do that, to make the Old Ford fireworks even better this year. And so for point of reference, as other, I've got their top weight of $80.
Of course, please, would that question be related from the city, $80?
Second. The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed?
Just a few more admin items. The next item I'll actually go over really quickly. We have a few positions that we're just trying to keep our position listing cleaned up. So that starts on page 40. Mr. Suttles has asked that we just take out, being J S O's and inspections, a couple of positions that are titles antiquated. So take it out, build an inspector apprentice, fire inspector two, and reclassifying those under a different title. So it's okay with the board, would you like to do that?
What's position, the board on that? Would we approve? The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Just a couple more. And the next item, I'm talking about intergovernmental relations a moment ago. Excuse me. Speaking of water, I might need some. At your June 30 meeting, I believe, the board voted to increase water rates for the Nevo Water System 3%. That was based on communications with the city from the time before some information changed there at the city. And so they actually increased their water rates 5% and not 3. And so we would like to do the same in order to keep everything equal for, since we pass on any increases to our customers typically. Otherwise, we would be creating a deficit.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move we approve that increase.
Second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next.
Thank you. And the last item is the EMS write-offs. Would I ask you to approve?
Please approve the EMS write-offs. Would you approve our, got a motion? Your second. That's all in favor?
Aye.
Good. Moving on to being tax matters.
Yes, sir. Just a few releases there are some common area that was identified. And again, that is not to be taxed. There are also some discoveries in our business listing and a few automobile listings there on page 51, 52. That's all.
Any questions, the board? Would we approve the tax matters? The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The PDC housing grant, Mr. Woodton, would you give us update on that?
Yes, sir. IPDC stands for Isothermal Planting and Development Commission. Commissioner Vaughn, as well as myself, sit on that board. IPDC is a four-county region, regional government that we're a member of, and they provide different services for this county as well as the other three. One of the areas they've traditionally worked in is housing. And so for many, many years, they have assisted with housing rehabilitation grants. Sometimes the county has been the recipient of the grant, and Isothermal has administered those. Some of the folks have been around a while, might remember Paul Akenton, different staff. In this instance, IPDC was the applicant for the grant. And so they have applied for and received this grant and are asking for an administrative fee to help with the actual implementation because most of the, if not all, the grant funds are going towards actual rehabilitation costs. So the grant will rehabilitate up to five homes. These homes are typically in fair condition. They're not poor condition. They might need a new roof. They might need a new heating system, maybe some flooring repairs, maybe some siding if they can get it in. But they typically, this agency, NC Housing Finance, looks for homes that are right on the edge of going down or they can't be repaired at all. We've repaired some in the past that probably needed to be replaced, and this isn't what this group does. So it's a great way to use outside resources to repair some of the housing stock of low to moderate income folks. So you've got a breakdown request of, over the next three years, in this contract of $20,000 that will be paid for the administrative costs, $7,500 for the next two fiscal years, including the current one, and then $5,000 of the last year. So that would space that out over the term of the project.
Would there be any comments? Would you like to, please, the board?
May I question you?
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Out of D, property sale update, Mr. Woodton?
Yes, sir. Very brief update on this item. I mentioned, again, I believe on the 30th, the staff had received an offer for about 65 acres of county-owned property on Forest Lake Heights that the board had declared surplus several years ago. The 30th meeting, you approved a resolution authorizing the sale of that property. And just again, a brief update, we're still in the process of closing and have not closed yet. So anticipate that happening hopefully by the end of the week, and we'll give an update next Monday. So that's all I have on that item. If you do request action on that? Not the, not the action, okay.
Okay, out of me, the voting delegate for NACO and NCC. Do we have any volunteers for that? Or I think Mr. Woodton would be pleased to take care of that for us.
Please might be a strong word, but I'd be glad to if there's not interest. Acronyms, National Association of Counties and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, these are advocacy groups for counties at the national and state level. We definitely always ask for designees every year for the Association of County Commissioners Conference because that's usually the driving distance. The national conference is usually in a far-flung location. This year, it's online and free, and more importantly, so we're trying to get as many counties participating. I'd be glad to if anyone else.
I think you went last year to the agreement. Yeah. But Ashley said, you know, since it's online, he would be willing to take care of that for us, if it please. Would you like to?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we designate Ashley, Woodton, our county manager, Ashley voting delegate issue.
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Woodton. We'll go to citizen comments next, and we have, anyone here tonight that has signed up for citizen comment? So I think Madam Clerk is bringing that forward. We'll go to major staff performance communication, Mr. Woodton?
We'll go to Major Staff for Force Communication. Mr. Wood?
Just one item, Mr. Vice Chairman, of note for the board and the public. The animal shelter that is under Public Services, we will need to close the shelter from Thursday, July 30 through Monday, August 10. There are some necessary repairs we need to make to the floor coating and the wall coating there. It's a little more involved than getting out a paint roller, as you can imagine, in the high moisture environment. So we will need that much time to do that repair and improvement. So we will be putting that out on social media, the newspaper, et cetera, to remind people. And to be clear, the animals that are there, we will find homes for fostering or otherwise, and so they will be taken care of. So we do want to make sure the public is aware of that. We'll make alternative arrangements during that time for black dogs, et cetera.
Mr. Wood, the commissioner's having a minute. What would you... Second, all in favor? We are adjourned.